So, welcome back, folks. We are now sitting in the Committee of the Whole agenda that we had previously recessed, and we are sitting on item H1 that is in the agenda, and that is Finance. And I am sitting in the chair. So, I will turn this over to Mr. Marshall to see if he can speak to item H1. Mr. Marshall?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So, the presentation and report that are on the agenda today outline the results of the Water and Wastewater Financial Plan and Rate Study that are required to be done every five years in accordance with the Safe Drinking Water Act. It's part of the requirements that the town needs to satisfy in order to renew its municipal drinking water licenses. So unfortunately, the consultant from BMA Management who did the study has a prior commitment, and so he's not able to provide the presentation. So, the committee can either just go through the report, or we can defer the presentation till next week, or alternatively, I can try to stumble through it as well.
So, I've had the benefit of, through my role as Chair, to be able to spend some more time on this. And obviously, the report has been contained since last week it was released, so councilors could have followed up. If the desire is to defer, then obviously happy to entertain and help facilitate that for the committee. If the desire is to speak to Mr. Marshall now, then that would be fine as well. And so, I will open it up to committee as to their desires in which to move forward on this item. Counselor Leahy.
Thank you very much through you, Acting Mayor Johns. I'd like to receive the presentation in lieu of the external consultant if Mr. Marshall feels he is able to do so. I think it's of interest to the residents, and it's important to have it on record. Thank you.
Counselor Roy D. Clemente.
I was actually going to suggest that we table this for a time when the person who actually conducted the study would be able to be here to answer our questions. This has financial implications for not just next year, but up until 2035, and I'd like to have some presentation from the person who has prepared the study. Thank you.
Thank you. So, motion to defer would always supersede. Do we need, we can do a vote on the motion to defer. That motion would be Counselor Roy D. Clemente, the motion to defer. Is there any other discussion on that? I'm seeing some nods, no other discussion. Okay. All those in favor of the motion to defer, okay. Unit, sorry?
Is it report and presentation?
Report and presentation. Thank you. And that was carried unanimously. Wonderful. Thank you. Okay. So, moving through the agenda, that was item H1, and now we are on to I1, and that is with Counselor Laura Lee Carruthers in the chair.
Thank you. We have one item today, and it's a Joint Corporate Services Engineering and Public Works, Parks, Recreation and Culture Report. So, it's all three departments coming together, and this is a salt management and chloride reduction report that council had asked for. So, I'm going to turn this over to you, General Manager Gandhi.
Through you, Madam Chair. This item was brought forth to, it started essentially with a presentation from the Lake Simcoe Region Conservation Authority on September 10th, and that precipitated a direction to council, and this report responds to that direction. I'll say that this was very much a collaborative effort involving our environmental services, but also our much-skilled staff in PRC, Parks, Recreation and Culture, and Engineering and Public Works as well. So, if there are any questions, happy to take them. I believe Chris Ross is also on the line who can answer any questions.
Thank you. A lot of work went into this, and we appreciate all the staff who worked on this. Are there any questions from members of council? Seeing none, can I have someone move the recommendations that are in the report? I'll read it out loud. First of all, that the joint report be received, and that council endorse the resolution titled Salt Management and Chloride Reduction, attached as Appendix 1 to the staff report, which recommends that the Province of Ontario adopt best management practices for snow and ice control, implement contractor training and certification programs, and establish a provincially-led advisory committee, and that council support joint communications efforts with the Lake Simcoe Region Conservation Authority to promote responsible salt management practice, and that council direct staff to forward the endorsed resolution to the Province of Ontario and Lake Simcoe Region Conservation Authority for their information and collaboration. And just a reminder to everyone that this came out of the presentation from the Lake Simcoe Region Conservation Authority. Counselor Roy D. Clemente.
Just wanted to move it, please.
Thank you. Secondary, Counselor Crone, any other comments? All those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you very much. And if there's nothing else, I'll turn the chair back over to you, Mr. Acting Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Carruthers. So, then that leads us to item J, which is Development Services, and that is with Counselor Roy D. Clemente in the chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was going to suggest that we do a same-day ratification of the salt management, but I thought that would be funny if we tried it. Anyway, so, item, three items on our prepared agenda under Development Services. They're all heritage matters. The first one is a report regarding 20342 Woodbine Avenue, and it's a heritage removal request. Mr. Krubnik, do you have anything further to add to your report?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Nothing to add to the report, but I'm open to questions of council.
Members of committee, may I have a mover, please? Moved by Counselor Foster. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? And that motion carries. Next item on our agenda is another planning branch report regarding 18929 Second Concession Road. This is another heritage removal request. Mr. Krubnik, do you have anything further to add to your report?
Through you, Madam Chair. Nothing to add to this report. Thank you.
May I have a mover, please, for this? Moved by Counselor Crone. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. The next item on our agenda is, surprise, surprise, a planning branch report regarding 18532 Leslie Street. It is a heritage removal request. And I should add that 18532 Leslie Street is the former Sharon Public School. So, Mr. Krubnik, do you have anything further to add to this?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nothing further to add, but again, I remain open to council questions. Thank you.
May I have a mover, please? Moved by Counselor Crone. Any discussion? Counselor Leahy, go ahead, please.
Thank you very much through you, Madam Chair. Could we have some more information on the last point in the resolution that the YRDSP in consultation with the town determine the methods of removal and storage for salvaged materials?
Mr. Krubnik.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. Thank you for your question, Counselor. Yes, the Heritage Act assessment recommended that the YRDSP determine the method of removal and storage for the salvaged material. I simply thought it was important that the town be a voice in that determination, so I've added that consultation with town staff so that we can be, we in consultation with the school board can determine if something is located on site, what we can appropriately, how we can appropriately accommodate that item.
Further, Counselor Leahy?
Thank you very much through you, Madam Chair. So, it raises more questions than it answers for me in the sense, who's the determiner? That is the, why are DSB going to be the ones determining what, how things will be removed, and where they'll be stored, and where, if any, location would the town of East Wilton Berry consider storing items?
Mr. Krubnik.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. Yes, Counselor, certainly you can amend the recommendation if you think it could be worded perhaps differently. The intent is that if there is something located on site, the school board would be in consultation with town staff, namely perhaps planning staff. At that point, if something is determined of value on site, we would either reach out to the York Region for their art to see if they can be archived to the York Region, or if, depending on the size or the number of items, Counselor, or if we have space within the town to accommodate them somewhere. I'm not aware of anything that may be salvaged from the site, but I'm preparing for that opportunity.
Mr. Krubnik, do we have a representative from the school board who may be able to answer some questions? I know you and I had discussed that possibility, given that committee may have questions.
Through you, Madam Chair. We did have members of the school board that were going to be with us here today. I'm not sure if at this moment they remain on site, or, sorry, in this meeting. There are individual would have been, I believe, Gerard Perez, Dominic Batistelle, or Rob Silvazo. So, perhaps you could see if they, our clerk can see if.
I see a new face on our screen. I'm just wondering if that individual would like to identify themselves, and if committee would be willing to let that person answer any questions. Do I need to take a motion for that, Madam Clerk?
It's always best to do that, Madam Chair, if it's somebody that you're requesting.
Okay. I have a motion from Counselor Crone to acknowledge our guest, and we're in committee, so we don't need a secondary. That's okay. So, I've got a motion on the table that we acknowledge our guest and allow that individual to address questions.
Hello, Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Thank you. I'm here from the York Region District School Board, and my name is Dawn Adams from the Planning Department, and happy to answer any questions. The best person to answer this question would be Robert Silvazo, who is the Superintendent of Planning, and he is also joined us on the screen. So, I'll pass it to him, but I am available for other questions. Thanks, Rob, for joining.
Thank you very much to you both, and welcome to you both. Mr. Silvazo, would you care to address Counselor Leahy's question, please?
Good afternoon, yeah, through you, Chair. If there's any items that are of particular value, we work closely with your representatives to determine how it would be removed and the best location for it to be archived. We have our own folks on board that have already gone through the school and done checks. There hasn't been anything that they identified, so if there's anything on your side that would be identified, we'd be happy to look into it. Hope that answers your question.
So, to clarify, as I understand it, the school board has archives, and before the school was moved over to Morel Boulevard, there were items that were either brought to the board's archives or were moved over to the new school. Is that correct?
I don't know if things were actually moved over. They did a review of the site, from what I understand. Dawn, you may have some additional information on this. I don't think there was anything of particular value that they identified.
I know they had talked about bricks when the building is demolished. I know they had talked about an art piece. The actual facts, I'm sorry, I don't know, but I'd be happy to look into it and get back to the town of East Wilton Berry.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, Counselor Leahy?
Thank you very much. Yes, through you, Madam Mayor. I think that there may be an opportunity, because this issue has come up before, even with the demolition of a playground, where a committee was speaking about perhaps there's some salvageable materials, they could have done a little sculpture, or some sort of little monument to the previous structure that was there. So, if there's an opportunity to explore some sort of dedication by using bricks or any other items that are identified, then I think that's worth exploring for future generations to preserve. Thank you.
Thank you. It sounds like that's covered in that last clause. Members of committee, any other questions? I had Counselor Crone, and then you, Counselor Foster. Go ahead, Counselor Crone.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and just through you to the rest of committee. I did, I expected that this, you know, this would have some fairly sentimental significance to it, so I appreciate the interest. And so, I took it upon myself to reach out to our school board trustee, Carolyn Butterworth, and she assured me that she had no issues with delisting it from the heritage list from her end. So, I think we're in, I think we're in safe territory with at least our trustee.
Mr. Counselor Foster, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Just to add a little context to this, the Heritage Advisory Committee, and myself, however unqualified I am, we did attend the school with some York Region Board people. The conversation simply was that the building had been renovated a number of times, and there was no assurances of what could possibly be found there. So, the thought process of possibly doing something on the property that would talk about what was there, maybe using bricks or whatever, the conversation came around to, there's always a possibility that the stone school SS sign could still possibly be there. Nobody knew exactly where it was. So, that was the process that we talked about, soft demolition, and if they could take it apart kind of gently when it came to there, so we could see what was there. So, that's the context of how we ended up where we are today.
Thank you, Counselor Foster. That is indeed helpful. Any other questions from members of committee? I actually did. I had a bit of, some feedback, I guess is the best way of putting it, or a question. Given the fact that it's in a very sensitive location as far as, you know, sort of the gateway into the community of Sharon, we're in the midst of exploring a heritage conservation district, and the fact that the school has resided there for, I think it was 160 years or something. My concern is that when the bulldozers start rolling, there's going to be a great deal of community engagement and outcry, and I would like to be able to get in front of that messaging, and be able to provide some information to the community. And it's not my property, it's the school board's property. It's not the town's property, and so I think it would be helpful if the school board could put out some messaging about what's happening on the site, maybe even today, share what the school board's future plans for the property are. I understand they've been, it's been a resource for YRP to do some training, but once it's demolished, what are the plan, what is the board's plans for the property? Go ahead, Ms. Adams.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. So, the plans at this point are, is the site is still very important to our board. We do not have a second full school site set aside. We have half a full school site set up in the northeast area of Sharon, to the east of Leslie and around Far Avenue. The second half of potential designated school site is not in participating lands. So, until we secure an entire school site, we will be retaining the former Sharon Public School site. We need to take the building down due to its age and its state of repair, and that was why we are going for demolition. But you will see us holding on to that site until we can secure another school site. If we do and are able to, at that point, as per regulation, Ontario Regulation 37423, we would then have a mandate to dispose the site. So, ultimately, the board will be disposing the site, and what that means is that you have to list it on an intake to the Ministry of Education. They have a priority order where our co-terminus school board, other school boards, be it French or Catholic or French public, and municipalities would have first right of refusal at a fair-market value price before we would put it on the open market. So, we still have a journey ahead for this property, as Sharon is still evolving and changing. But the identified second school site for future development in Sharon is up in that northeast quadrant around Far, the Far Avenue area in the east of Leslie and north of Mount Albert.
So, if I may, is there a way for the school board to put together some form of communication for the residents of Sharon? Maybe it's being done, maybe it can be done through the school community, through the trustee for us to be able to share with the community. I'm just, given that the adjacent properties have been subject to some fair amount of discussion about intensification and development, my concern would be that the minute you start to demolish, there's going to be the assumption that condos are coming, or something to that effect. So, I'm just wondering if we can ask for the board to work with our staff to put out some communication about this. Obviously, it's your message to deliver, but I want to be able to avoid challenges in the future.
Through you, Madam Chair. We'd be happy to do that. We'd be happy to do it through a school newsletter. We can't get to the larger community, but be happy to share with you that you could put in your, any flyers that you have, or information on your board, or on your town website. So, we will work with your staff to make sure that it's a clear message going out.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Counselor Johns, go ahead, please.
Yeah, just two questions. So, in, through you, Madam Chair, just looking for clarification. So, did you, you say ultimately that it is the school board's desire to dispose of the site. Is that correct?
That's correct. We cannot obtain that secondary school, not secondary school site, that second elementary school site in the northeast corner.
Okay. And the, I was always under the impression that the province had the opportunity on first rate, but then you just clarified that the municipality actually does in fact have the ability to go, to have first right of refusal. Can you clarify what you just said previously?
Right. So, historically, there was another Ontario regulation where the boards had more control over disposing sites. In the last two years, it has been replaced by Ontario Regulation 374/23. And really, the province always has first priority. They can control who we sell it to. They have the final say. But the priority of associations or municipalities or other school boards is the, our co-terminus board, other boards, the municipalities, public colleges, and universities. And if it is not taken up at that point, then it can go on the fair, open market. But all this is now being handled by the Ministry of Education.
Understood. So, can you just clarify one last time? Are you saying that the municipality itself does have, in fact, have the first right of refusal, when and should that time arrive for your disposal of the property?
So, what we would commit to the township is that we would alert you that we are putting it on a list, an intake list. If a far co-terminus school board was to come forward, and you were to come forward, it would be the province who would make that ultimate decision when you read the regulation.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, if I could one last time. Given that we are, given that we would have first right of refusal, have there been any dialogue with, has there been any dialogue with the municipality in advance of looking to lift the heritage designation in advance of executing the demolition permit, the opportunity to engage with staff within our Parks and Recreation Department, or Economic Development Department regarding the opportunity for use of, let's say, in Georgina, there's Y-space, for instance, that we have a partnership with. There's also discussions floating around Senior Centre. Has there been any dialogue at all between the school board and our Parks and Recreation Culture Department?
Not at this time. No, there hasn't. Our first step and phase in this process is to get the building down and demolished, and at that time, we'd be happy to enter into discussions, also being very clear to the community that ultimately, this is a board site that could be disposed. We could do a shared use agreement in the meantime, if it is open green space that the town would like to use. And all those discussions happen all the time between other municipalities. So, happy to have those discussions if the demolition is supported, and we go forward.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Counselor Johns, I'm wondering if you're, if maybe Ms. Adams or Mr. Silvazo could comment on the current condition of the building? In that Counselor Johns has suggested that it might be potentially used as, for a community use, I guess is the best way of looking at it. So, instead of demolishing it, could there be a second life for it outside of that of public school, I guess, if I may, without putting words into Counselor Johns's mouth?
And if I could speak first, and then I'll pass it over to Robert. So, I apologize if I was inferring that I wasn't looking at raw land in terms of a park. Were you asking for community use of the structure itself?
Yes. Given the age of the property, I understand the desire when the, I'll say, the capital value, the amortized value ends up dropping off the table. But it seems that even for a school like here on Height Secondary School, there is a desire to continue to retrofit that school instead of knocking it down and building a new one. And so, I guess what my comment is in relation to, if the municipality does in fact have first right of refusal, and the opportunity to have discussions for the opportunity to retrofit this, I'm just wondering if those discussions have taken place, because it seems that the school board's policy to, or not policy, the school board's opportunity to be able to explore the retrofit with improved capital into the existing schools seem to be a path, but not in this case.
Thank you. So, again, if I could respond, and then I'll pass it to Robert. So, we received due funding for the new Sharon Public School, mainly because of, A, the location of the school in proximity to Leslie, the age of the, and condition of the building. The ministry does not replace buildings just because they're aging, but it really is how much money do you need to put into the building to make sure the building is safe. It's quite an old structure in that it is wood frame, and if we look at the Life, Safety and Services, but I'll let Mr. Silvazo speak now to the condition of the facility at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Go ahead, Mr. Silvazo.
Thank you. So, the building itself, once we received approval from the ministry for the new Sharon, typically we move into a mode of repair as opposed to renewal of the building. So, at that point, just to mitigate costs, the building itself, as you know, is quite old. The roofing system is, a majority of it is at life's end, as well as a good portion of the heating system, in terms of the equipment and the components. But I'd be happy to kind of do a full review. I haven't done a full review of the building, but we could do a full review and let you know if you'd like to hear your information.
Yeah, just in follow-up, I feel like the response was, is that for the York Region District School Board's budget based upon funding for the new school, that there isn't an existing budget to look into repair and retrofit, which would make sense, because you just built a new school. And I guess if ultimately disposition is on the agenda for the York Region District School Board, again, if the municipality has first right of refusal, I'm just wondering, before council contemplates, or sorry, committee contemplates the lifting of the heritage building and allows for the demolition, because once it's gone, it's gone, I'm just trying to ensure that all opportunities to explore, explore community use and preservation within the municipality have been tabled. And so, I, just to be clear, the way that it stands now, I will be voting no, but I would like the opportunity to continue the dialogue. You did receive, through you, Madam Chair, you did receive the, or you did make note that you would be happy to follow up with this, with this information. I think that would be wonderful, and I think the opportunity to have a positive dialogue that would, that would engage in a positive outcome for the, for the community, I think it's just might be a pragmatic view and a pragmatic way to look at this from such rich history within our municipality.
So, I have Ms. Adams, and then Counselor Carruthers. So I have Ms. Adams and then Counselor Cruthers. You're muted.
Thank you. I just want to say that typically when the board leases property for an extended lease, we also have to go through the ministry. The ministry has a set rental rate, and that's based on the board maintaining the building. As Mr. Silvazo said, we have not been taking the building in, in, we've just had it in repair mode. And the reason that we received funding is that the ministry was in agreement with the assessment of the building, that it had reached the end of its life cycle, and we were putting good dollars into a building that would not take us into the future. If, you know, we would have to work with the ministry if the municipality wanted to take over the building and look at a different rental agreement where you took over, oh, not ownership, but you took over maintenance of the building. That would be something we could look at. It's not really done. But again, our goal is to have a second elementary school site. And this is really our safety net, that if we can't secure one in the northeast corner, then this would be one that we would look at redeveloping. It's not ideal because of its location close to Leslie. But I can understand your perspective from the sense of this was a community facility and so forth. So happy to have some conversations, but it's not particularly a building that's in a condition that you would want to take over, the maintenance and condition, to be very clear. Not trying to say no, I'm just saying it, it would, it would have its legacy of maintenance and cost issues that hindered us as we went forward and would also may hinder you, the township.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, just on the follow-up, like, thank you very much for opening up the door and providing clarification on the, on the, the fact that it is both the ministry and yourself and the fact that helping to facilitate, maybe there is a, a tri-party discussion. And if, if, if in the end of that, we still land in the same position, then so be it. But I think that the opportunity just to simply explore that, that, that would be favorable because it is, it has stood this long, what is another few weeks. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Counselor Cruthers?
Thank you. I'm well acquainted with this school, having been the trustee for it for fifteen years. And when I first became trustee in 2003, Sharon Public School was on the list for prohibitive to repair, meaning that it was beyond its life expectancy. And the board has done a great job in putting on Band-Aids and keeping kids in that school for, for many, many years. And now we're hearing that the last number of years since they received the funding for the new school, not when the school went in, but when they received the funding for it, they've gone back to just, you know, emergency repair sort of thing. So knowing the condition that that school was in when I was a trustee and hearing from Ms. Adams that they haven't been put, been upgrading it, I would not want to take that on as a municipality to, to look at what it would cost to continue to keep it in, in a state of good repair for use. My time as trustee, we saw many schools that the school board moved out of and leased to maybe another school board. And the amount of dollars that were spent to try and maintain those schools, it really is a black hole. So as much as it'd be nice to hold on to that, it's a lot of square feet and it would cost us an awful lot of money. And I think if we, if we're not actively looking for a space, I'm not sure we should be looking at this site and trying to make it fit into a plan that we don't currently have.
I see Mr. Karmazin nodding. Mr. Karmazin, did you want to comment as well as far as the current needs or am I putting you on the spot?
Through you, Madam Chair, I completely concur with both the board's position on the facility and, and the potential uses, the potential town uses.
Thank you. Counselor Foster?
I, I think what might help us here is looking at the Heritage Impact Assessment, which is on our agenda, page 164 to 167. It specifies things like floors, interior walls, ceilings, windows, doors, exterior walls, roof, that type of thing. And there are a lot of good and fair condition marks there. So that tells me that the building's not about to fall down, but I don't think that talks much to the interior stuff of the structure that the school board is concerned with, heating, plumbing, all that type of thing. So I, I don't know if there's somewhere that, that one of our guests could speak to that, but that's the way I'm reading it. And I'm wondering if there's a chance that, you know, looking at these good and fair conditions, and there's a lot of goods, again, which means it's not going to fall down, but I don't think it necessarily is taking us where we want to go as far as your thought process, correct?
Correct.
Robert, would you be able to answer that?
Yeah, I'd be happy to add to that. And that's a really good point. So some of the main systems that are beyond life's expectancy include fire alarm. We have full building automation in our buildings as well that run all the heating controls and ventilation. That's at life's end because we didn't renew any of that. Security, CCTV. The other piece to consider is all the underground services and the in-wall services, such as wire distribution, piping, and all that. So those are the things that are kind of hidden within the building that you wouldn't normally see. But they do have a life. And, and all those are kind of at or beyond that expectancy. Repairing those are pretty significant because once you get into any type of utilities or services that are within the structure, it obviously gets very expensive to, to bring them on them.
Thank you both. So at this point, I have a motion on the floor from Counselor Crone that I believe is as presented. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? And that motion carries. And I, I did want to thank you, Ms. Adams and Mr. Silvazo for your insights and for your comments today. I think Counselor Johns makes a good point that we have lots of opportunities to work together in identifying mutually beneficial community assets that we can work together on. We have a long history, even over at, in Harvest Hills with the Harvest Hills Activity Center. And, and I want to, I want to hope, I hope that we can continue that. And I do look forward to the communication that comes from the board so that we can, we can continue to be good neighbors.
Absolutely. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you so much. All right. So that brings us to the end of our prepared agenda. Mr. Krabnik, do you have anything further to add at this time?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nothing further to add. Thank you.
Members of committee, anything? Seeing none, I'll turn the chair back to you, Mr., Mr. Acting Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Roy DiClemente. So that, that leads us to the next item on the agenda, which is Item K, which is Parks, Recreation, and Culture. And Counselor Crone, Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And we have one item on our agenda today. Mr. Karmazin, do you want to take us through what we have?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Prior to the 2026 budget deliberations, staff have prepared a report to council for consideration related to some recommendations for the farmers' market program for 2026. A full summary of the past year's farmers' market season will be provided with the Recreation Services Year-End Report in early 2026. Parks, Recreation, and Culture staff have followed up with the farmers' market vendors and representatives of the market to determine continuous improvement efforts to assist with increased attendance and visitation at the market. The primary recommendation within the report provided combines our popular concerts at the Civic Center with the farmers' market program to provide opportunity for increased visitation. In addition, staff will continue to leverage sponsorship, sponsorship opportunities with this new format, including the potential sponsorship of no-cost vendor booths for local area EG farms and, and food producers. We're anticipating a potential savings with the combined program, including the market and the, and the concert series and potential additional revenue. However, we are maintaining the existing budget until such time as we have had the potential to merge the programs and, and operate these, these programs. Be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Karmazin. Before I open up for any questions, I need a mover for this, Counselor Leahy. And it is a three-part motion, but I will ask if there's any questions now. Counselor Leahy?
Thank you very much. Through you, Acting, uh, Counselor, Chair. I don't know who's doing what these days. So my, my question and observation is I think this is a great initiative now that staff has the opportunity to provide input into how to increase attendance. I've had many conversations, both with vendors, former vendors, attendees, and those who can't attend because of the day and time that it was on. And so I think that the, I creative idea of moving it to piggyback on the Tuesday music nights is a great one. And so I'm, I'm fully supportive of this as well as the last part of the recommendations as well. So good work, good work, staff, on the, on the future of the farmers' market. I think it will definitely increase attendance by both vendors as well as residents.
Great. Thank you very much. Counselor Cruthers, you had a question or comment?
Thank you. I'm, I'm happy to see this come forward. This was a recommendation of the committee that I was council liaison to. They'd been recommending this for a while, so I'm glad to see it, it being acted on now. The people who were intimately involved in it through the committee, I thought this was a good idea, so I'm very happy to support this. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a three-part. It's that we receive and go along with the recommendations, that we merge with the music night and the farmers' market, and that we make it a, a, an event of municipal significance. Okay. All those in favor? Opposed, motion's carried. Mr. Karmazin, do you have anything else for committee?
Through you, Mr. Chair, nothing further. Thank you.
Any questions follow-up from Mr. Karmazin from committee? Seeing none, I hand the chair back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Crone. That takes us to Item L, which is Fire and Emergency Services. And Counselor Foster is in the chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a report on the agenda today regarding the establishing and regulating bylaw for fire and emergency services. I will need a mover to move this ahead. Counselor Leahy. And Chief, can you walk us through this?
Thank you, Chair Foster, Acting Mayors, members of council. I'm pleased to present the draft of our updated establishing and regulating bylaw for council's consideration. The updated bylaw provides the legal administrative framework to ensure alignment and compliance with the current legislation, operational practices, industry best practice, and municipal service level expectations. The recommended direction and services included within the bylaw were developed with consideration to several key documents and factors, including our community risk assessment, the fire underwriters survey, previous and current fire master plans, national standards, demonstrated need and industry best practices, continuous improvement, and a review of our municipal comparators. Additionally, this bylaw will ensure EG-FES delivers fire protection services through a comprehensive fire prevention, public education, and emergency response model to protect the lives, property, environment of our community, and to provide additional safety and support for our professional team members who are committed to delivering exceptional service to our community. The bylaw establishes the desired goals and objectives to meet the specific needs and circumstances of our community as it continues to grow and evolve, but it does not establish any minimum staffing levels for EGS in any division. Any proposed changes to the staffing complement will continue to be addressed by council on a demonstrated need basis through the normal business planning process. The adoption of the updated bylaw ensures compliance with the town's obligation to establish and report a level of service in writing and will provide direction and accountability to EG-FES to ensure we continue to deliver high-quality fire protection services to our community. The updated bylaw will serve as a foundational document to support our community risk assessment, community risk reduction plan, and update the fire master plan that we delivered to council in 2026. I'm happy to take any questions related to the bylaw.
Thanks, Chief. I, I don't think there's a, a whole lot of difference here between what we're putting forward today than many other establishing and regulating bylaws. So I will move to committee for any questions and we will hopefully work through them. Any questions? Counselor Roy DiClemente?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When we had our, our workshop on, on this, the, the schedule hadn't been attached to it, but I, I had an opportunity to take a look at it. And it is, the schedule is, is noting that we're going to establish a desired standard of a six-minute road response travel time ninety percent of the time. And having a peruse through our budget binder, it looks like our current response time is, is averaging at about fourteen minutes. And so this represents a dramatic improve, increase in response time, sorry, improvement in service level, I guess is what I'll call it. And I wonder if we're setting an unrealistic expectation for the community if, if right now we're responding in fourteen minutes, give or take, and we're saying that our goal is now going to be six.
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, through the chair to the Counselor Roy DiClemente. Just a minor correction, the annual report was a total response time of fourteen minutes. The travel time was approximately nine. So the goal to establish a six-minute desired travel time, we will see significant improvement with that as we continue to operationalize our haul and landing station on the current basis and potentially in the future. We do see some service potential gaps in some areas, but one of the things that we looked at was we, we looked back at the, a number of fire master plans. And one of the key recommendations was that council adopt and response metrics and performance standards with KPIs that'll be reported back to council. So we believe that the six-minute time, while not being able to accomplish it all the time, is a good goal to set for us to work towards in the future. And we think, well, we, we understand there will be some gaps that we do see. There's some significant numbers of areas within the town, predominantly even within some of our, or what we considered our urban areas, we will be able to achieve that response time. Sorry, travel time.
Thank you. Anything further, Counselor Roy DiClemente?
I saw that Counselor Cruthers had her hand up. I, I do have further comment and questions, but I'm happy to, to yield to another person.
Okay, let's move to Counselor Cruthers.
Thank you. I, I'm having trouble with approving a bylaw that has goals in it that are aspirational because these are, our bylaws are a little more concrete. And to move to, I would love for us to move to a six-minute travel time, but to approve that, I would need to know what the cost to the taxpayer would be. So what do we need, what would be the cost to move to a six-minute time? And if we don't have the costing on that, then I don't think that we should be putting that into the bylaw.
Through the chair to Counselor Cruthers. Thank you for the question. So couple of factors. The, the travel time is really about establishing the infrastructure that we can respond from. How council determines to operate from those facilities with respect to whether they are staffed in a full-time basis, part-time basis, or a combination of the two would dramatically affect the overall cost of the service model. But what we really see is if we're, if we're focusing on response time, sorry, travel times, we, we would likely need to, not likely, we would need to look at constructing a station in Sharon. And then once we did that, we were able to meet the travel times within the ninety percent time across the township. So cost to build a station, number of factors included with that. Obviously, there's capital costs potentially to procure land, where we're considering some solutions that might reduce that cost. Cost to build a station, you're probably in the eight to eleven million dollar range.
Okay, so that is not in our current budget, I believe. I haven't had the chance to go all the way through it, but I, I'm just, I'm concerned, as much as I would love to have more, more firefighters, another station, I, I don't want to be approving a bylaw that has costs associated with it that are not being approved through the budget process. So if, if we need another station in Sharon to meet the six-minute travel time, then let's do, let's do that. But I don't want to put it out there to the public that we want to achieve a six-minute travel time if we can't do that under what council has approved. So we would be kicking this to the next council. We, if we, if we say we want six-minute travel time, then it's up to the next council to approve that, that new fire station. So I just, I just feel like we're cart before horse here. And, and maybe, maybe I'm misunderstanding this, maybe there's another way to look at this. But I, I'm, I'm very concerned about the costs that this bylaw will incur and us not approving those costs in advance.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Chief.
Through the chair to, to counselors, to the counselor with a question. Just to further elaborate. So one of the keys to establishing the fire master plan that we intend to start very soon, we've actually, we've started, which we intend to deliver to council next year. So one of the keys to establishing the fire master plan that we intend to start very soon, we've actually, we've started, which we intend to deliver to council next year, is we need to know what council wants. So to be able to do that, we need to understand the level of service council needs, wants to provide to the community so we can make recommendations within the fire master plan to, to move the, the service forward, to ensure that we are meeting the service levels required by council. We, we also have an obligation, as we heard from the Ontario Fire Marshal's Office, to report our level of service within the community. So we, we would have the option, we, we could either reduce the, the, the goal of the travel time to whatever council decides to set today, or you could remove it, but then I, I believe we wouldn't be meeting our obligation under the OFM to set this, to set the service level accurately to the community. Now, I agree, we will have spots that we won't meet the service time, and, you know, I worked in a previous organization that had some similar travel times, and we had stations that were under construction that took some time, and we had areas that we, we did not meet those service, or those service level expectations, but we were working towards them, and the community accepted that. They knew that there was a process, and obviously with, you know, budgeting and sustainable staffing and building a building, it takes time to do those things, but we used it as a goal line. We reported it to council, and every year we came back with some options to move it, recommend it, or to try and improve the level of service that we provided to meet those goals that were set by council.
So you're asking what level of service we want. Well, I want a two-minute travel time. That's not going to happen, given the budgets that we have and knowing our community's appetite for increased taxes. So for me, or for council, to say what we want for a service level, it's got to be data-driven. We need to know what, there's so much data that we need, but, but one of the big pieces is what will this cost? So it may be six minutes is too high. Maybe we should be asking for five minutes. I don't really have anything to base that on until we get to our, our master plan. So, and I also know that, that we gravitate to the, the things that, that we can understand when it comes to some of these bylaws, and so travel time is something I can clearly understand, how long it takes a truck to get to my house. So that's why I'm focused on that. But I worry that there's other things in here, and I go back to my original comment that I don't feel bylaws should be aspirational. They should be outlining what it is that we're doing. The master plan should be aspirational. Here's where we want to go, and here's how we're going to get there. And then we approve budgets to make sure we get there. So I, I would love to see this in a master plan. I'd love to see why, why you chose six minutes and not seven minutes or five minutes, what it would cost to get us to six minutes, what it would cost to get us to seven minutes or even to five minutes. But it's got to be based on not just what we want, but what we want based on what the community can afford. So I would not be approving this in its existing form because I don't believe bylaws should be aspirational.
If, if I could say one thing, I'm, I'm not sure that this ENR bylaw is going to change our thought process of how we want to move forward with fire services. So the aspirational six-minute mark, I don't know is as, as bad as we may think it is. Not taking anything away. I'll, I'll move on. I got Counselor Leahy.
Thank you very much through you, Chair Foster. This is about deciding what the priorities are. This is about needs versus wants. We've discussed in the past aspirations and goals of adding three additional libraries to the community. And in the past, multiple members of council have stressed the importance of having goals and having targets. And so in the spirit of being consistent, I would like to emphasize that we need to prioritize our fire and emergency services always. And there is a big difference between setting goals, and, and as our fire chief has already explained, he is, he is setting goals that we can work towards, but we definitely need improvement in this area. And I think that these goals are legitimate and are data-driven, contrary to what another councillor has suggested. So, and I would also like to suggest that we think outside of the box creatively, and there is no reason why the suggestion should be made that we have to continue to increase taxes and the burden on the taxpayer in order to improve the staffing levels of our fire department when we could be looking for cuts in other areas rather than, and, rather than putting a burden, a future burden on the, on the taxpayer. So we need to be looking at other ways of improving the fire service without increasing the taxpayers' burden of responsibility for paying for it. And I think there are many opportunities, if we think creatively, about how we can achieve the goals that have been put forward by the fire chief without increasing the burden to the taxpayer. Thank you.
So let's try to keep this to the establishing and regulating bylaw for now. I also think it might be worth saying, Chief, and I'm, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth here, but I'm not sure what kind of message it sends to our residents if we make our goal nine minutes versus six. I think we might be going the opposite way. And I also think it's worth saying, you know, we, we could staff all three of our existing stations right now, and we would still have some areas where it would be hard to meet that six-minute goal. So I think looking into the future, that, that extra station placed strategically might help us a lot here. Anyways, I, I'm not, again, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth. Counselor Crone.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Between the time I put up my hand and
We answered?
Got to ask my question. Counselor Cruthers stole a lot of my thunder because she picked up on the, the comment that you made, Chief, about what council would, would like. And I, immediately my mind went to, well, you're the expert. You're, you're the guy that we, you know, we look to for, for advice. So is, is six minutes the right number? Or is it, is it seven? Like, you tell us, because I, I, I put my trust in, in your hands. And so I'm not saying we need another education workshop, but I certainly, I want to get it right, and I want, I want our numbers to be meaningful, but I also want to have, have a, you know, a, a map forward for the next few years about what the fire department will look like in, in your master plan. So if, if you tell us six minutes is where we need to be, then I'm with you. Or if it needs to be different, I want to listen. But I, I, I'm putting myself in your hands to let us know what is, what is best. Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any response, Chief?
Through the chair to Counselor Crone. Thank you again for the question and the comment. So the, the, my recommendation on the six-minute travel time was based on a number of factors. So we looked at where we are today. We also looked at comparable municipalities, and we relied heavily on a number of standards that, while not mandatory, they're certainly considered best practice and within the fire service. Within our urban areas, it would, it would, the standards would actually call for a reduced travel time. And then we have some of our suburban and rural areas that would call for six minutes or, or potentially greater. So we tried to strike a balance between the resources that we have, where the level of service we think we can provide for a municipality our size, knowing that we won't always achieve those. There's a number of factors, you know, multiple calls, stacked calls, different areas, weather, you know, some would just, spots that you just can't get there from here because of road networks. Some of those things certainly exist, and they exist in every municipality. Dissecting, you know, major roadways, you know, 400 highways, things like that. So we know those factors exist. But we also believe that, you know, with, with some, some modest increases, that, and you're going to see that in, in the upcoming budget, we're actually going to go from about nine. We think we're going to achieve low to mid-sevens in 2026. So we know there's a gap still between our desired time, but we also believe we have a plan for that in the near future. And, and what our intent will be to do is to come back, because this was, you know, this was a recommendation in the fire master plan, was to develop a new ENR bylaw that includes measurable KPIs that, that council approves, and then we report back to you every single year, or each year. So we believe that, we know there'll be some areas that we can't get it. We're going to provide that, and we're going to try and continue to provide, you know, sustainable and, you know, reasonable solutions to council to continue to look forward in the future.
Go ahead, Scott. Counselor Crone.
So, thanks, Chief. Through you, through you, Mr. Chair. Love the KPIs and I, you know, in my previous career. So, but one of the things that, that we were always cognizant of when we were setting KPIs for the next year, you want to make them achievable, because if you make them too hard to reach, it demoralizes your, your team. And so they, they get frustrated because they can't hit it. So I, I just want to make sure that we're real rock solid, that these are the right numbers that we want. And if, if they need to be higher, you know, if it needs to be not six this year, or next year, maybe seven, happy, happy to entertain that and, and talk about. But I want to make it so it's realistic, you know, achievable, and, and, and that the team, the team gets behind it, too. Thank you, Mr. Foster.
Thank you. And I wanted to go back to Counselor Roy DiComente. I let that get away, and I'm sorry, but we're, we're back.
That's okay. No, I, I wanted to hear the conversation at the table, and it, it kind of aligns with where my thinking was, was that while six is aspirational, I, I absolutely agree that that would belong in the fire master plan, and that we would work towards that, and as we were able to achieve better, better travel times, that we would then update the ENR bylaw to say, this is what our service level is. This is our expectation. And that's what we're reporting out because that's what we're delivering or we're aiming to deliver. Chief, I heard you say that with the suggestions that you're making, or the amendments that you're making, or you're hoping to make in 2026, that you're looking at low to mid-sevens. So maybe that's where we need to put, put into this bylaw. For me, I feel like a bylaw is something that can be amended based on fact and, and KPIs. I'm also mindful of the fact that, that this represents a significant, that still represents a significant improvement in service level. And I know that there are other, there are other measurable factors within this. You've got, in the city of Toronto, they have a four-minute travel time that they work with. But they also track call processing times, turnout times, total response, effective force, all of those sorts of measurable things is the first truck on scene is not necessarily the one that can mount an effective defense against a, a full structure fire. So for me, this is only one aspect of it. I even went as far as to look at the province reports on ambulance response times. And in the region of York, which has a density that is three times greater than that of East Gullimbury, York region gets an ambulance travel time of eight minutes and 17 seconds. And so for me, I was trying to get a sense of where this would fit in. And given that we have some areas that are denser and are closer to stations than others, I wanted to make sure that we weren't putting something out that was an unrealistic expectation, but that it was measurable, achievable, and can be changed later when we start to incrementally improve our services through the addition of a Sharon station, additional staffing, and so on. So that's, that's where I'm at, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Chief, do you need to comment on that?
Through the chair to councillor. So a couple of factors. You're correct about, you know, the, a bylaw could be amended later, up or down, depending on council's desire and whatever modifications we make in our level of service, stations, infrastructure, all, all the things at, at a later date in time. You know, what we tried to do was really, because there's a number, like you said, there's a number of other, you, you could have a multitude of data points to determine the level of service you provide. An, an initial response, staffing, time, effective response force. You can break the community up into every type of building class and have effective response force numbers, travel times, vertical response times. You can, you can put as much data as we want into this to determine what's the level of service that we want to provide. So what, what we really tried to do was to roll it up into, you know, all of those things are factored into this to a certain degree, but was to look for a point that we thought, again, and, and we know we'll have, and, you know, a larger city that you mentioned, they have areas that they, they just don't make that either. They have areas within their urban core. They, they make their four-minute response times. You know, they're able to meet NFPA standards for, you know, 42 staff on scene, and like, they have a very good level of service in certain areas. And then they have other areas where they know they can't meet it. And they're not going to build a fire station there. There, there is acceptable level of risks in different spots. But they've set some goals and they measure and report on them, and they, and they aim to look for ways that they can improve those level of services in those areas, sometimes even through some different alternative measures. But again, you know, if, if council wants to amend up or down, certainly they have, they have the, the will to do that, and we'll work with whatever mandate's provided to us.
Chief, would it be fair for me to say, again, I'm trying to help out here, I think, would it be fair for me to say, with the improvements we've made with some staffing in the haul and landing station, and what we hope to do next year, and we might meet that seven to seven and a half minute that you're speaking about, we could be coming back here in a year to amend this bylaw for one minute? Am I, am I thinking the right way here?
Through the chair. That's potentially correct. If that, if the impact is as we predict, we believe we will, we're confident we will see a positive outcome to the community with, if, if those changes are adopted by council through the budget process. And then it would be, you know, a council direction of whether they wanted to amend the bylaw by a minute or a minute and a half, or, or whatever they decided to do, or they could provide direction that if it does change, we'll, you know, we're going to report back.
Yes.
So when we report back, then council could make a decision at that point in time where they wanted to amend the bylaw or allow it to gather an additional year or two of data to see what that looks like, just to have a bigger data set to work with. But once we provided that data set back to council, it would be in their hands to decide how they wanted to deal with it.
Thank you. Counselor Leahy.
Thank you very much through you, Chair Foster. So I was told before the strategic meeting how we were going to vote on it, I was told that, you know, it's a living document. We can always amend it. And whenever anybody says, oh, yeah, we can, we can come back to this later at another time, and we can always amend it. We're, we're right in the middle of November, which is the budget season, and we have full days of budget deliberations coming up. Now is not the time to be changing the recommendations of our fire chief now, and, and bringing up distractions of ambulance times and, and other places and that. What we need to focus on is what, something that Fire Chief Main Prize said, which is that if we were to change the six-minute travel time, there is potentially, and please correct me if I'm quoting you wrong, there is potentially that we are not meeting our obligations. Is that correct? If we, if we start changing the numbers based other than what you have recommended to us, we could potentially not be meeting the obligations under the OFM. Is that correct?
So through the chair to Counselor Leahy. Our obligation is to report our level of service. The, the level of service that council sets is within their rights. What we, what we are required to do is to establish a level of service and report it. So if we changed it to a time, a travel time, something different than six minutes, as long as, my opinion is, as long as we report what level of service we're trying to provide, we're within our obligations to the OFM. So it's not about how long it takes. It's about, this is the level of service that we provide and communicating that accurately with the community so they understand the expectations and, and abilities of, of the fire service. There's no obligation, the travel time, response time, all of those different factors. The OFM doesn't mandate any level of service to a municipal fire service. They simply have, your obligation is to report what that level of service is to your community.
Thank you for that clarification. Yes.
I'll go to Counselor Cruthers.
That's very helpful, what you just said. So it's an obligation to establish and report a level of service. So what I'm struggling with is the aspirational part of it, and perhaps this is a question to our CAO, is about our liability if we put something in the bylaw that we cannot fund. I, I just, I'm just wondering about what our liability is. I'm all for KPIs and aspirational goals, and, and we need to improve our response time 100%. My concern is just around how it's in the bylaw. And now I understand from what you just said that it's, it's an obligation to have something in there. And so I'm just wondering about what our liability is if we don't reach that six minute.
Go ahead, Mr. Veltre.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I, I'm not in a position to provide probably a detailed answer on risk exposure and liability. But what I think is worth taking note of is that, if I understood the chief correctly, the obligation is to establish what you, what, what is believed to be reasonable objectives and goals in this bylaw. And what I'm hearing from the chief is that there is a proposal in the 2026 budget, as it stands, depending on how those deliberations go, for some modest continued increase in emergency services staffing. And the chief is indicating that he believes that operationally, that will make a significant difference, improvement in service, and he believes that we should, the data should show next year that we're seeing travel times in the sort of seven and a half minute mark, which he believes is a major step in the right direction. So what I thought I understood from the chief is if you established that as your objective in the current bylaw, that is well within your rights and that you would be meeting your obligations, because you've been clear about what your standard is. And the chief is indicating that with some proposed changes that he is recommending, and we have seen in the proposed budget, that he believes that when we report out on the data in 2026, he's quite confident that you're going to see us either bang on or very close to meeting those objectives. So that's the best I can do to kind of sort of give you sort of a sense of feedback to your question.
So I'm trying to figure out what happens if we don't. So if we are at seven or seven and a half and our bylaw says six, do we have any liability there that we have not funded the fire department to get to six minutes?
I'd have to get legal and sort of appropriate advice on what potential claims would look like. I guess just generally speaking, what I would say, and I think we've heard this from members of Counsel, it seems that you'd want to set the objectives at a reasonable level that you believe are achievable and realistic. And we often talk about SMART goals, and we often say, like, SMART goals do not include goals that you think you have a minimal likelihood of achieving. And so I guess I would only say again, if the chief is advising that he believes that with proposals that are contained within the 2026 budget, he believes that you'll see significant improvements in response and travel time and service, and he believes that as long as that's identified and quantified, that the town has met its obligations. And so I don't know how to differently say that.
Yeah, thank you. So we're saying, I'll direct this to chief, and you're saying that if all goes as planned through the budget process, six minutes is achievable in 2026? No?
Through the chair to Counselor Carruthers. Sorry, was it a question to myself?
I was, but I see Mr. Veltchik is shaking his head.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'll let the chief answer, because he knows the times better than I do, but I thought I heard the chief say seven and a half minutes was the number that would be more realistic.
Okay.
That the data would show that we would achieve that with some adjustments, and that that would in and of itself be a step very much in the right direction.
Okay, so based on that, I go back to my original question, what's it going to cost us to get to six minutes? So that's my question. Like, I want six minutes, but just, these are just words. We actually need to put dollars behind this to get us there. So if we say six minutes in here, how do we get there? How much is that going to cost? Because I want us to be at six minutes, and I don't want this to just be words in there, and we're all, you know, patting ourselves on the back when we're seven and a half minutes next year. If we're saying six minutes, I want to see, how do we get to six minutes?
Chief?
Through the chair to Counselor Carruthers. To achieve the six minutes 90% of the time, it is my opinion that you would need to establish this fire station in somewhere roughly in the center of Sharon. That will then provide the first response to cover the core of Sharon, Green Lane, and then it'll provide an effective response or a timely response to the fringe areas going in the other three directions, which will then close the gap to achieve six minutes. To meet the six minutes, just to answer, just to go back to the dollars and cents, it would be my estimate that it would require a capital of investment of approximately $10 million. I mean, fire stations, you can have the average cost station suitable for that area, long-term build, you're probably in the neighborhood of approximately $10 million, given some of the construction dollars I've seen from neighboring municipalities and what they've built in certain areas. The establishment of a station in that Sharon area would effectively allow us to meet our six-minute travel time 90% of the time.
Okay, thank you. So what would be the timing on, if all went according to plan, when would that station be operational, and how many additional firefighters would we need to staff it?
Through the chair to Counselor Carruthers. So in the 2026 capital plan, there's a feasibility study associated with the development of a fire hall in Sharon. That will cover a number of factors that we need to confirm. We have a number of theories. We believe that from a response model, it's the correct place. There's a number of other factors we would want to be sure, to make sure it's correct. Traffic studies, you know, remediation to where the site is, service hookup, there's a number of other, some basic design. So that is in the 2026 capital plan. So I would anticipate that we would report back to Counsel in 2027 what the results of that feasibility study were. It would also likely include some estimated building costs. And then we would present a plan to build the station based on capital availability as soon as possible. There's a number of factors that are included in that. I mean, there's been some money, from my understanding, put aside, but, you know, whether it's enough or not, you know, I'd probably defer that to my friends in finance. But, you know, there would certainly be some significant capital investment required to do that. From a staffing level, so obviously I think we should be looking towards staffing that hall at some point in time with some full-time service, but the establishment of the hall is what gets you the six-minute travel time. So they're leaving the station, and it's the six-minute radius or travel time from the station. What we didn't include in there was a response time goal. Obviously, they affect each other. We included some turnout times for our on-duty staff only. That's also contained within the bylaw. So there's a performance standard for our on-duty staff to, from call time processing, one minute from our partners in Richmond Hill, two-minute turnout time to get the crews out of the building. That only applies to our full-time staff. It's not reasonable to expect our paid-on-call staff to be able to travel to the station and leave within two minutes. But it effectively could still give, it still gives us our six-minute travel time. And then should we, should Counsel elect to staff the station with additional complement positions, then that would lower the effective response time in Sharon and in the other areas that it supports as well.
So we're not going to meet six minutes until that station is operational, and that station is not going to be operational until 2029, 2030? You're saying you're going to report back on the feasibility study in 2027? I'm assuming it's going to take another year to do RFPs and design, and then at least another year to build it, two years, so 2030. So I think that's where I'm kind of getting at with this, that we're putting this in the bylaw now, knowing that it's not achievable until 2030. So that's where I have a problem with that. I want us to get there, and I want us to build this extra station, but I'm just worried about putting something in a bylaw that is not achievable until 2030. So that's where my concern is, and I don't know if anyone can say anything to alleviate that concern, but that's where my concern is at. So I'm all for the station, I'm all for the six-minute response time, I'm just worried that it is, we are so far out from being in a position to be able to do that. No matter how many dollars we pour into this, we're not going to get six minutes until that station is built. So that's my concern. You don't need to respond to that unless you want to.
I'll move to Counselor Leahy.
Thank you very much through you, Mr. Chair. At this point, you know, none of us have a crystal ball what's going to happen tomorrow or next year, or if any of us are going to be on the next term of Counsel. But instead of kicking the can down the road constantly, and I feel there is a sense of urgency that we need to start having goals so that we can make investments, and when it comes to the budget time, we can then make decisions. But at this council meeting, at this committee meeting, that we listen to the recommendations of our expert fire chief with what he has put forward, that we, aspiring to a goal is not a bad thing. There has been two statements made by the same counselor. You are against aspirational goals, but then you are for aspirational goals.
That's not what I said. That's not what I said. I questioned.
Yeah, I questioned aspirational goals being in a bylaw, and I've said that I'm for aspirational goals. So either listen to what I'm saying or stop misquoting me.
So let's, I believe I got Counselor Roy DiClemente.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was going to suggest, and I don't know who has the motion on the table, but I was going to suggest that we approve the establishing and regulating bylaw attached as Appendix A to the report, as amended to reflect a 7.5-minute road response travel time, and that staff direct the fire chief to bring an updated bylaw when further service levels are achievable.
Go ahead, Counselor Johns.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'm just, so when we're talking about establishing and approving the establishing and regulating bylaws, so previously, did we, did our counsel have documented a travel time within this document?
Chief, go ahead.
Through the chair to Acting Mayor Johns. The previous E and R bylaws did not contain any service level recommendations with respect to travel or response times, or turnout times or call processing times.
So just in follow-up to that, like, I'm 40, I was going to say 43, I'm not 43, I'm 45. And growing up in town, yeah, I'm trying to grab a couple of years there. And, but I think to myself, so in the time that I've lived in town, we haven't had a document such as this that helped drive focus towards, towards... I don't want to say we haven't had documents in the past that haven't helped to drive positive outcomes, because that would not be fair to the previous councils. But what I will say is, is that we are busy, sorry, I'll check those words, too. We are having discussions around risk and liability should we document something, and I think that is a very fair conversation to have. But isn't it better for us to try and fail than not to try? Like, if we document this, and we go out and we chase this goal, and we can look to determine how we do that, and we have that documented, and we fail, like, we raise our hand and we have it fail, but when we are putting in a number that says we already know that we're going to hit it, I wouldn't support an amendment. I will support what the document has, that the chief has put in the document for six minutes, and I'm happy to have a conversation with any resident and all that says we failed trying. Because in my entire life that I've lived here, we have arrived at a point where we have the current staff and infrastructure we have, and from conversations within the community that I've had, I feel that residents want us continue to focus on continuous improvement as anybody else would. And so to that end, I'm happy to support the motion as it's written. If there is an amendment, I would be voting no.
Thank you, Counselor Johns. I'll go to Mr. Veltchik.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarity, and I'm just wondering if the chief could assist, maybe it's just me, but I feel like I've heard two different terms today. I've heard service standard and goal. Service standard, it is reasonable to communicate a realistic service standard that you can achieve. But if it's a goal, I mean, you say this is a goal, and we are not suggesting we will necessarily hit that goal, because our service standard, like, I'm just not clear with the fact that I'm hearing goal and service standard, and if this is representing more along the lines of service standard, I just wouldn't want Counsel to think that, in fact, it would be appropriate to pass something that they don't think is realistic or achievable. I'm not the chief, you get your direction from the fire chief, but I'm just hearing a couple of different terms that, I don't know, I was getting a little confused with, that's all. Thank you.
Chief, you have comments?
Through the chair to Counselor. I think the consideration needs to be around the specific wording that's contained in the E and R bylaw. So the travel time, respectively, that particular bullet point F, is to establish a desired six-minute standard response time across the community 90% of the time. So I think that's, you know, I think we understand that it's not going to happen every single time, but it is our desire to establish that, and we are going to, and together we'll work towards establishing that level of service on a go-forward basis. So, you know, I think we were also careful when we drafted the plan to not overcommit to something that, you know, could potentially create some challenges later, but it's really about setting some goals and a desire to establish that, and that's what we are asking of Counsel is to set that desire, and we will continue to make recommendations to help Counsel achieve that desired six-minute response time.
Thanks, Chief. Madam Clerk, help me out here. We've had a suggested amendment. It was, the original one was moved. Which way did we want to go here?
Mr. Chair, so the amendment would take precedent over the main motion, and the amendment was proposed by Counselor Roy DiClemente. So at this point, you would have to consider the amendment. If the amendment is approved or defeated, then it would dictate how the main motion will be changed or not changed. So you would have to deal with your amendment first.
So if the amendment is defeated, we can go back to the main motion?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody else? Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to confirm that, yes, I'm making the motion to amend the original resolution. We've been advised today that our current travel time is nine minutes. I think that seven and a half minutes is actually, it's a desired standard that we can clearly communicate and potentially achieve, and that we absolutely want to continue to improve our service level, and that I think that is something that needs to inform the Fire Master Plan process and continued reporting from the chief. And so that's why I made that resolution. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So this amendment is, I just want to make sure we're on the right track here. This amendment is telling the fire chief that we want to change the six minutes to seven and a half, and it won't be brought back to us until he has the proper matrix to tell us that we can achieve the six-minute mark. Am I reading that correctly? Whoever wants to answer me. Go ahead.
So my motion is that we amend the resolution to read that it be resolved that we receive the report, and that Counsel approve the establishing and regulating bylaw attached as Appendix A to Report Number FES 25-02, as amended to reflect a 7.5-minute road response travel time, and that the fire chief be directed to bring an updated bylaw when further service levels are achievable. So you would be voting on whether we would amend the resolution to read that.
Six to seven and a half.
Then, if that passes, then we would vote on that resolution. If not, then we go back to the six-minute and vote on the original motion as moved by Counselor Leahy.
Okay, so can we bring that and bring it to a vote? All in favor of the amended resolution? I see two, so that is defeated. So we are going to go back to the original resolution? And can I have everyone in favor of the original resolution? And that is carried. We took a long time to get there, Chief, but we got there. Anything else, Chief?
Through the chair to members of Counsel, nothing new for today. Thank you for your continued support of the fire service and our staff. Thank you for your continued support of the fire service and our staff. We're committed to providing the best service we can to our community. Thank you.
And with that, I will turn it back to you, the acting mayor, Mr. Johns.
Thank you, Counselor Foster. So in the agenda that we moved to item M, administration, there's none of this time. Item N, engineering and public works, none of this time. O, legal and legislative services, none of this time. P, other business, none of this time. And that does take us to adjournment today. And so be it resolved that the meeting of committee of the whole council adjourn at 4:38 PM. Mover for that, Counselor Crone. All those in favor? Motion carries. Thanks, everyone.